I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Marquette City Commission for Monday, August 11th, 2014. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call the role of the Commission?
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Ken Benzey.
Here.
Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Neme.
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. All Commissioners are present. Is there any agenda changes desired by the Commission or staff? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ken Benzey, seconded by Commissioner Campana, to approve the agenda. Anything further, either Commissioner Ken Benzey or Campana? Okay. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to approving the agenda, please say no. The motion is passed unanimously. Announcements. I have one public service announcement. Our Channel 21, which, I'm not sure if you're viewing it on Channel 21 right now, or this is actually going to digital channel 191. So if you're looking for 21 and you're not seeing us, go to 191 and you might, so. But if you're not seeing us, you won't hear that.
The people seeing us are in the right place.
Yeah, that's right. I guess so. We also have a number of openings on boards and commissions yet. We need a healthcare, or a person whose interest is healthcare, or a healthcare representative for the Aging Services Committee. Five openings on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Two openings on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Two openings on the Harbor Advisory Committee. Three openings on the Local Officer Compensation Commission. One opening and an alternate member opening on the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board. Two openings on the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. One opening on the Housing Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, and the Police Fire Pension Board each. Six openings on the Sister City Advisory Committee, and we need three people to finish off the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. So again, I would encourage people to apply for those openings. As I mentioned before, we have a nice application online. You can fill it out online. You can email it in the city. It can't get much easier than that. You could print it out and bring it into the city, or if you have, don't have access to the Internet or a computer, you can stop in at City Hall, either Clerk's Office or the Manager's Office, and get an application and fill it out, so. But I encourage people to do that. I'd also like to call attention to, to my left, the east wall of City Hall, the Commission Chambers. We have the artwork from the Presque Isle Park sign. It was done by, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the artist.
Sherry.
Sherry.
Loonsfoot.
Okay. And the sign, I guess a digitized copy printed is at Presque Isle Park. This is the, some of the original artwork for that sign. As the sign deteriorates over the years, we have a digital copy so we can reproduce it each year, and so we can always be sure to have a nice presentable sign at our, at one of our best parks, so. We owe it a bit of gratitude to Sherry Loonsfoot for doing the sign. Last, I have, with regret, we, we've lost two citizens in our, in our community that have connections to the city of Marquette. First, Frank Chato passed away. He was mayor twice, spent 12 years on the city commission, 38 years on the, the fire department, or perhaps longer. So he's passed away, and, and we're certainly going to miss him. Secondly, E. Richard Schweman has passed away. He's one of the city representatives on the, the Marquette County Transit Authority Board. I spent many years working for Mark Tran, or the Marquette County Transit Authority, Marquette Transit Authority prior to that, and Dick was an invaluable assistance to me, invaluable member of the board for many, many years, decades, actually. And so we will miss Mr. Schweman. If we could perhaps have just a brief moment of silence for both of these individuals? Thank you. Those are the, all the announcements I have. The next item on the agenda is recognition of outgoing members. Would Jess Jones, Nicole DeWald, and Mr. Jack LaSalle meet me at the podium over here? Mr. LaSalle, we have a T-shirt, a pin, and a certificate of appreciation for your service on the Local Officers Compensation Commission, I believe six years or longer. We appreciate your, your service.
Thank you.
It's certainly an important commission. It doesn't meet real often, but it's one of the easier ones to serve in that regard, but we appreciate your, your service. We can't do it without the good graces and volunteer, volunteerism from our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a... Ms. Jones and Mr. DeWald, our Regional Recreation Authority Feasibility Committee Study Committee Mr. DeWald, I have a T-shirt and a pin for you.
Thank you.
And a certificate of appreciation, thanking you for your service on the Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad Hoc Committee. It's a little easier, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your service.
Thank you.
And Ms. Jones? Whoop. Here's, here's your certificate. I have a T-shirt and a pin for you also.
Thank you.
And a certificate of appreciation for your service on the Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad Hoc Committee. Again, as I mentioned, it's, it's an invaluable service to the city. We, we couldn't do our job without the, the assistance of citizens who step up and volunteer. We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We also have, are here to welcome tonight two incoming members to board the committee, Ms. Leslie Hartman to the Local Development Finance Authority, and Mr. Bradley Newman to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If you would please join me up here. We start our volunteers out in Spartan fashion. You get a pin, and you get the, the real things at, at the, at the end of your service, but your, your service is, is not diminished in one iota. We, we certainly appreciate your, your willing to step up, and, and they're two very important bodies that you have volunteered to, to help us out with, and as I mentioned, I wouldn't do it without you, so thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you. The last item regarding appointments, we have Lynette Van Welsenair, has applied to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2017. Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this? Commissioner Coyne?
Your Honor, I would like to nominate Lynette Van Welsenair for this committee.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Not really. Again, as you pointed out, these services are very valuable to the city, so we appreciate people stepping forward.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to appoint Lynette Van Welsenair to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2017. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. We now come to the portion of the meeting which, public comment. Comments may not exceed, exceed three minutes per person, and please state your name and physical address when making public comments. We have a new feature here tonight. We have a clock that controls lights. As the Speaker starts their, their presentation, I'll hit the start button. It'll count down from three minutes to two minutes. At two minutes, the yellow light will illuminate and stay steady for 30 seconds. At 30 seconds, it will start flashing, and when time expires, the red light will, will light up, and the citizen will be finished with their, their comments, hopefully. Anyone wishing to address the Commission? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Jolene Klump, and I am temporarily located at, I just moved here, 227 Sidewinder in Gwin, and my goal is to be in Marquette soon. So the reason why I'm here tonight is that I noticed when I got here that you don't have a dog park, and I really want a dog park. So what I did was, I gathered a number of signatures to support it. I did contact, I believe it was Parks and Rec, and they gave me four things to consider: electrical, source of water, that it needs to be centrally located within walking distance of infrastructure and topography. I wanted to say that dog parks, as a rule, are not open after dark, so I don't know why we need electricity. Source of water, responsible dog owners that love their dogs bring water, although, you know, it's always nice to have it. Centrally located, it's been my experience, and I've been to dog parks across the country, that dog parks are an afterthought once the city is already built, and so they're generally located on the outskirts of the city. And as far as topography, the park we're proposing is the Pioneer Ballpark. It's fine, there's no problems out there, otherwise you wouldn't have had a ballpark there. So we're hoping, the citizens that have signed this petition, and myself, that the city would take a look at the possibility of allowing us to use that as a off-leash dog park, and I'm willing to raise the funds to get the fence up to code, whatever that is. I'm sure I can get people to build us picnic tables and put out there, maybe even a structure. So that's what I'm here for tonight. Any questions?
We don't ask.
Oh, you don't ask, correct?
No.
Sorry.
If you, if you have a petition there that you want to give us.
I do.
You can turn it to the City Clerk, if you would, please.
Over here?
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Mike Beck, registered voter 1,005, Alawaye, here in the city of Marquette. I wanted to address the Commission on a couple of things. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the LDFA. I understand tonight you'll be voting on the bylaws, to approve the bylaws, and their rules of procedure, which is great, because they need some guidance moving forward on how they're going to run their authority. But with that said, it seems evidentiary that if you're voting on the bylaws, they probably didn't have bylaws or an authority beforehand. That being said, I'm listening to the city manager from Houghton. He, in stating to the city commission last week at the first meeting of our authority, he misstated the tax capture that they collected in their city by about a half a million dollars. And when this was mentioned at the second meeting of our LDFA, and correct, with the correct figures, that when he addressed his city commission in June 12th, 2013, he stated that their authority captured $663,500, of which $643,000 went to their MTEC. That's well short of 1.1 million. And when, Wednesday, when this was brought up, he again misstated it and said something like 775 or 800,000, a couple of hundred thousand dollars of a misstatement, for the second time of the second meeting of the LDFA. Now, for the last month and a half or two months, I've been urging due diligence, and hoping that the city takes a good, hard look at what kind of agreements you're going to be entering with our fellow, our future satellite, and understand just what we're getting into contractually with them. Because certainly, when I looked at the arrangement that they have for us, they're asking for $883,000 in the next three years, a tax capture of our money for their operation, which seems like a lot of money to take out of our city and deliver to them. Smart Zone technology parks are nothing new. The Batavia Industrial Park was founded in 1959. These things have been around for five decades. I'm confident the city and our LDFA can run our own independent smart zone without giving a dollar to the partner that we will be entering our agreement with. Mr. Vita has mentioned that we should run these things separate, I believe, in meetings in the past. The structural arrangement calls for separation. And Mr. Taccalini, in the meeting last week, also said that the city should perhaps own this, and I would recommend that we do that. And please, continue with the due diligence and look at what they're doing. And please, inform the authority that they have substantial powers that they can keep within our city. We do not need to pay somebody $800,000 over the next three years to do it for us. And one other thing, these lights and things, these may entertain the city commission.
Time has expired.
But according to the...
Your time has expired, Mr. Beck.
Yes, sir. Unfortunately, the city's own laws...
Your time has expired.
Your commission, the city clerk is the one...
Your time has expired, Mr. Beck. Please sit down.
The city clerk is the one who needs to do the timing.
Please sit down.
You should check your laws, because this is...
Please sit down. I know what our rules are.
You know what your rules are?
Please sit down.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to address the Commission?
Frank Jeffarito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. July 28th, Neme forgot to call me up for reserve time. On record, at the 1:11:37 mark, I'm heard saying, "Point of order," in perhaps an urgent tone, but not angry. Neme handled it nicely until I tried to tell him that I'd prefer to speak before the motion in this board's customary manner of business. Like lightning, Neme raised his voice and blurted, "If you'll be quiet, you can speak. You'll speak after the motion, as I instructed you. If you don't want that, leave." Once at the mic, I said, "That exchange was absolutely uncalled for. He's yelling at me for his forgetfulness. I was sitting politely in the audience, waiting to make the comment." Coyne called a point of order, but his mic was off, so we missed a lot of his words. He claimed my comments didn't pertain to the item. Your mishandling of an item becomes part of that item. The attorney's asked to look at it from that angle, instead of telling you just what you want to hear. Coyne later commended the visiting mayor on Japan's culture of courtesy, and that he's embarrassed by how we treat each other, like the way Coyne threatened me in the men's room one night. He then asked Keith, "Can a citizen in the audience burst out with a point of order?" I would ask the Sergeant of Arms if a person does an outburst of discourtesy like that in the future, is it reasonable to rule that person out of order? If a citizen shouts out a point of order and then starts yelling, is that appropriate? Angela replied, "I don't personally believe that it is." I agree with Angela. The truth is, no such outburst occurred. There's no way to lie, it's on record." Coyne dealt me another low blow. He then complained about me being the only person to expect eye contact. Wrong again. Mr. Peterson did that very night, at 57:50. He stood here many seconds until recognized. Older people automatically expect that courtesy, because they're from an era when parents raise their children with common decency. July 28th, I needed to quickly remind you of my reserve time. Usually, there's discussion first, and I wave my papers. The difference here was Ryan's instant motion. You then failed to mention what we're to do the next time a mayor forgets to call us up. Remain silent and lose a chance to deliver a comment I spent two nights on? You have to provide a way. What a disgrace of the Constitution and your sworn oath. Keith later told me we're supposed to inform the clerk. Rushing across the room would cause more commotion than saying, "Point of order." Who knew a citizen could approach the clerk during a live meeting? That's fine, so long as you provide a way. You sure didn't offer any option, though. You cared less. Think of all the times DePietro forgot to call me. Never a big deal, because he's a down-to-earth people person, versus the arrogance we witnessed July 28th. Anyone who doubts that, review the record at 1:11:37. And Coyne's closing comment.
The next item is the consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Okay. Is there a second motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No, these are routine matters that can be handled this way.
Okay. Commissioner Reynolds, anything?
Nothing further.
Any other Commissioner, is there a comment on the motion? Okay, hearing none. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to approve the consent agenda, which is items A through G, as posted on the agenda. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any Commissioner opposed, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. We do have a couple of ordinances, bond ordinance and a, a bond resolution, which may require real call votes, but it's unanimous, so it's a unanimous real call vote if necessary. Mr. Clerk. Our new business, we have the City of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority bylaws and rules of procedure. City Clerk, do you have some background information on it?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. It's August 4th, 2014, meeting the City of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority, LDFA, adopted bylaws and rules of procedure. The LDFA hereby submits its bylaws and rules of procedure for the Commission to concur and approve. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, approve the bylaws and rules of procedure submitted by the market, City of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority. Alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I guess what I'd like to do, before we get into a motion, I'd like to request that we suspend the rules. Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we suspend the rules.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne? Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to suspend the rules. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no. The motion passed unanimously. I guess the, this is a relatively routine item, but we took this off the consent agenda because to, to kind of let people know where the Local Development Finance Authority is in their process, and remind people a little bit about what is involved with it. The, I think Mr. Beck was questioning whether we had, we did in fact have ruled bylaws previously, but that was for the old authority, and I think that they needed some updating. I don't know that they had rules of procedure. I don't think the city did those things back then. But I think the, people need to remember that this isn't going to increase their taxes. It is going to take some money from the city general fund, because a portion of the, the increased value of our tax base is going to be captured by the Local Development Finance Authority to finance the smart zone. The amount that's going to be captured is four mils out of 14.9225, which is 28 percent of our millage. So a simple way to think of it is, $1 goes to the LDFA of the increment, the increase in, in value, and $3 will go to the general fund, so it's a, it's a smaller portion that's going to the LDFA. And again, it's not going to increase taxes. We will also capture school taxes, which will not hurt the schools. If the state approves this whole process, we would get, from the state, three of the six mils of the state education tax, and nine of the 18 mils of the locally voted tax to support the Marquette Public Schools. And again, the schools will be made whole by the state treasurer. The state treasurer will take money from the, the state general fund and put it in the school aid fund to make up the, the loss of the, of the money that would go to our LDFA and our smart zone. So I think this is, this is a, a great thing for the city, and if, if anyone has any questions, they call the city manager's office, certainly he'd be willing to, to answer them. And our Local Development Finance Authority is proceeding. This is one step in the process. They are reviewing a tax increment financing plan, and there is a local development plan, and I think that meets a, another concern of, of some citizens that have been expressed at local meetings, that, you know, this is a city authority that's going to run amok, has the ability to tax. That is not the case. They, they have to have their plans approved by us, so there is accountability on behalf of the city commission and on behalf of the citizens of the city. Any other, Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan?
I would just add, and you've said this, but another way of saying it is that truly most of the funding for this will come from the state.
Exactly.
A fairly small percentage comes from the, the local taxpayer, so that's one of the real benefits of, of being able to do this. And secondly, I believe this is correct, but, and not to take issue with Mr. Beck's comments, but I don't believe we have the capability of opening our own smart zone. I think this is the only way we could do it, as, as a satellite of the Michigan Tech, Michigan Tech, Houghton Hancock Smart Zone. And matter of fact, there's no guarantee we're going to get this. There are only, I believe, three that are going to be authorized going forward, and there are several communities which are also looking to do this, working with universities downstate. So we're trying to, to do this, obviously correctly, but, but also expeditiously, so that we can get our, our request in. But this is a real opportunity to, to take advantage of some funding from the state to assist with economic development in a, in an area, in a way that's been very successful in the Houghton Hancock area, and that, there are other things we could do for local economic development, but, but we could not be starting our own smart zone. This, this is the only way we could accomplish that, so I think it's important for people to know that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coyne?
Again, to comment on some of the public comment that Mr. Beck made, he stated that Houghton was a satellite of us, and it's the reverse. We're becoming a satellite of Houghton. And I wonder if I could ask the city manager of this to comment on the, the accuracy of us giving $800,000 to M-Tech over three years. Could you comment on that?
That's completely inaccurate.
I have no idea where he got that figure. It doesn't, that's just simply not true.
That's exactly right. It's simply not true.
Any Commissioners, want to make a comment? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I would only comment that as we move further through the process, there certainly will be people that will become instant experts and tell us exactly what's going to happen and how it's going to happen. And I would suggest that in, in certainly the great majority of cases, those people will be misinformed, or ill-informed, or uninformed, but will be quite happy to, to try and tell us what they know. So just as a public, beware of it. If you have questions regarding the smart zone, or the LDFA, or any facet of it, certainly the city manager's office is available to you, and would be, I think, quite, quite happy to explain any, or answer any of those questions that you may have. I've said this before, and I'll, I'll say it again, that the Upper Peninsula has been famous for exporting two things, three things really, wood, rocks, and our children. And when we look at how we can change that dynamic and keep our children and keep good, high-paying professional jobs in the area, the smart zone is one ingredient of that. So when we bet on the smart zone and we work towards it, we're really working towards the future of our children and our city, and really the entire central Upper Peninsula area, too. So thank you for your forbearance as we go through the process.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stonehouse. Commissioner Campana?
I'm all in favor of the smart zone. I think it's a great, great idea. Just a question, the first year and maybe second year, I'm not sure, we have to raise And after that, we're, as it builds, we're capped at, is it 400,000? I mean, there'll never be more than 400,000, it won't be, I think Houghton, was it a million or something?
Well, officially, we can't say anything yet. The state hasn't agreed to anything yet, so we're, we're diligently working on the plan, and we're going to submit a very good plan to the city commission, and then the city commission will hold a public hearing, and then either approve or deny the plan. Then we'll send it to the state, and that's when we'll get official confirmation of what they're going to do. We are proposing caps. We're proposing capping the general fund millage at four mils, and we're proposing, once it reaches $400,000 per year, it doesn't increase. Now, we're still working around that, because the state may tell us that, well, if you're going to cap your money, we're going to cap ours, so we're trying to put the city in the best position that we can to, first... to, first of all, be one of the first three, but also give them the best plan that makes them want to approve our application and also doesn't harm the city. So I just want everybody to know, the LDFA board is a fantastic board to work with, and the citizens need not be concerned. Nobody is on this board to rubber stamp anything, and nobody, including myself, wants to harm the city. So we're going to make very well sure that the city is kept in the best position. Any money that goes up to the Houghton Hancock District will be through the arrangement of a contract where we're actually receiving services. We aren't going to just send them money carte blanche. And it's going to work the other way around, too. They're going to want to contract with us for certain services. But all of that is still being worked out. But again, I know I went beyond the question. I just wanted to reassure everybody that this is by no means a rubber stamp action the LDFA board is doing. And again, I can't speak highly enough of them. All 11 members are top-notch and are, we're going through the agreements line by line and just assure you that we're going to give you the best plan that we can possibly present, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Kambezi?
Thank you. Just to follow up, information is available on our website, correct? Is that, so, you know, I think it's on the front page. You can go to our website and click on the link for the LDFA and find more information. But start there, and certainly as we work through the process, there will be more information. But that's a good starting point.
Commissioner Coin?
Well, I think in fairness to people listening to this, until they hear it about five or six times, it's just like a big mess of initials, and it took me probably four or five times to figure out what this really was. And once I did, I became a big fan of it. And I think the LDFA is, is basically not totally independent. Some of their actions are, are subject to our approvals, and, and they also then have a very great responsibility, and that is they appoint the Smart Zone. And it's very important to have great people who get it on the LDFA, who then in turn will pick good people to be on the Smart Zone. And I think the, in addition to the rocks and the trees and the kids, one really good thing this is going to have is the real interbreeding between the LDFA and the Smart Zones in the copper country and here. And I think we'll have overlapping board members, so we will not be competitive. And if you think about these two cities, or three cities, Houghton Hancock and Marquette, that, and Northern Michigan and University and Michigan Tech University, no, it's so silo-like that they do their little thing, we do our little thing, and there's no cross-pollinization. I think this will unite these two communities and thus make both of them much stronger. And when this was happening, we really, I think, the people who went there felt strongly that they really want this to happen, as a, as an intermingling between Tech and Northern and Marquette, Houghton and Hancock. And I think that will be a great economic boost to the area, really will, because there's lots of stuff going on at Tech that we know nothing about. And similarly, the people in Houghton and Hancock and Tech don't know anything that's going on here, and this will change that. And I think that's very important, very positive. So be patient to try to figure this out, because it is difficult.
Thank you, Commissioner Coin. Anything else from any commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
As long as we're doing this, let's explain what's going on. Let me do an oversimplification because a lot of people aren't even familiar with what the Smart Zone itself is. It sounds very nice, but what does it do? And, you know, and in the simplest terms, the way I look at it, we have a lot of young people coming out of Northern Michigan University, and in the case of Houghton Hancock, Michigan Tech. Many of them have great ideas for starting businesses, but they need some help, they need some support, and this is an opportunity for an organization to step in and work with these people to create jobs and businesses in our community. Obviously, Tech brings some different strengths to the table. Northern, again, brings some different strengths to the table. I think bringing the two together can be very helpful. But basically, we're not, you know, we're not talking about going out and trying to recruit someone to come in here and manufacture automobiles or something like that. We're talking about building businesses from the ground up with young people with good ideas and, and providing the incubators and the support and the help that will allow that to happen. So that's really, unless someone wants to correct that, when, when people say, well, what is a Smart Zone? Well, that's kind of what it is. It just, it works with people to help them create jobs in our community, local people, you know, working here. So.
Well, I think we've got to beat that one to death. But it's, it's a complicated issue. I think it's, it's an exciting time. And I think Mr. Simpson made two very good points. We've got very good people on the LDFA. They are, they are really working hard. It's, you know, we have no fear of bureaucracy running amok. They'll, they'll do the best for the city. And secondly, yes, what we've been talking about isn't yet set in, set and approved by the state. Even if they do not allow us to cap it, it's still roughly a three to one ratio. One, one part goes to the LDFA and three parts will still go to the City General Fund, and your taxes will not be increased as a result of this, and the schools will not lose. Commissioner Coin?
We approve the bylaws and rules of procedure as submitted by the City of Marquette Local Development Finance Authority.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Second motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Coin, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Coin, seconded by Mayor Protem Stonehouse to approve the Local Development Finance Authority bylaws and rules of procedure. All commissioners in favor of the motion, say yes.
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 Any commissioners opposed to the motion, say no. The motion is approved unanimously. That concludes our... Oh, no, it doesn't conclude it. Thank you. I guess I'm a little quick here. The next item is city manager and city attorney performance evaluation process. City Clerk, will you read the background?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. The new city charter requires the city commission to conduct an annual performance review of both the city manager and city attorney. Past practice has been to appoint three, three commissioners to serve on the committee to review the evaluations completed by all commissioners and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the manager's compensation or terms of employment. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, appoint three city commissioners to serve on a committee to review the city manager and city attorney performance evaluation and make a recommendation regarding any adjustment to the city manager's compensation or terms of employment. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Just for the, the edification to the public and the commissioners, I, I aired when I, when I prepared that agenda supplement. Not only will the, the committee review the, the evaluations, they'll review it with the city manager and possibly the city attorney, so that they, they are prized for what happens. I've talked to Mayor Protem Stonehouse and asked him to serve on this committee, Commissioner Reynolds and Commissioner Coin. If there's no objections, I'd like the commission to approve that. But my thinking is that Commissioner Stonehouse was on the committee last year, and the other two commissioners will be here after Commissioners Ryan, Stonehouse and myself are gone, so there will be some continuity to next year. And if there's no objections, would someone make a motion perhaps approving this? Commissioner Ryan?
I would, I would move we appoint Commissioners Stonehouse, Coin and Reynolds to the committee.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Kambezi?
I'll support.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No, nothing further.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioner Kambezi?
No, nothing further. I'm glad you did bring up the fact that both the city attorney and city manager will be a part of it going through the process. I think you always get a better evaluation that way, so thank you for bringing that up.
Exactly. And then to remind commissioners, we need those all tabulate the results for the committee. We need them by August 29th. So all in favor of the motion by Commissioner Ryan to approve the, the committee and Commissioner Kambezi seconding it, the appointment of Mayor Protem Stonehouse, Commissioner Coin and Commissioner Reynolds, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion passed unanimously. That concludes our business portion of the meeting. And we now will move to comments from the commission. We will start with Commissioner Reynolds.
That was really, really quick. Holy crap. Okay. So my only comments is that over the weekend, I got some emails from the food truck people, seniors, and from both Dios de los tacos, which I think I'm pronouncing that wrong again. But, but anyways, they were from both of them, and I talked with both of them on the phone as well. And they're running into problems with the DDA and Mana telling them that they shouldn't be in charge of writing said ordinance. And I know that as a commission, we kind of wanted this to go forward. So my only comments are that I'm hoping we can come up with some kind of solution, because she's kind of running into a wall that Mana thinks it should be more of a citywide thing instead of just a DDA thing. So right now, they're just in limbo, both. And then there's also a lady that contacted me from Munising that wants to consider doing her truck here as well. So those are my only comments, and just that I'd like to see it go further.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, just that tonight we have a pleasantly short agenda. I can't remember the last time we left here before eight o'clock, and of course, we haven't left yet. And if some of the, some of my fellow commissioners get long-winded, we could be here till heaven knows when. But I was going to say that this is just the first of four full commission meetings this week. And we will have budget meetings tomorrow at 5:15, that's Tuesday, Wednesday at 5:15, and Friday at 8:30. And they rarely go short. But it really is an opportunity to, it's not just about setting budgets. In the process of setting budgets, we make many decisions about programs, about activities, about rental fees, about a lot of things that go on in the City of Marquette. And I know it's a lot to, it's a lot to ask for us to spend nine hours or 10 hours doing this, and even more for people to sit out in the chairs out here and, and listen to that. But you're certainly welcome, and it is a very key part of government going forward. So even though we didn't earn our pay tonight, we will this week. Leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coin?
Well, first of all, I think I did earn my pay tonight. Okay, I just want to make that clear. Secondly, the budgets, I agree, they're so important, and I would hope that the candidates who successfully survived the primary would think of coming, because they're going to be victim of the budget that we're going to work on for the next year. And it would give them an idea of how hard this is and what issues we really are trying to solve and deal with. And what, I really think it would be helpful for them to come and attend, and it is, they are public meetings. And finally, I would just like to comment on two friends that the mayor mentioned, Frank Shado and Dick Schweman. I had the honor of serving with Frank Shado, and again, this is one of the benefits of serving as a commissioner. I never would have met Frank and become his friend, and he really epitomized a great love for this community and a great dedication. And he served this community proudly and well. And Dick Schweman was both a friend and a patient who drove me nuts, frankly, because he would be so hard on me. But I dearly loved him as a friend. And just every time he would see me, it would be an adventure in, in getting picked on by him. But that's just vintage Dick Schweman. But I, he also was very devoted to this community. And I thank both of them for their service. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coin. Commissioner Kambezi?
Thanks. I, I do want to give a brief update. I am part of the Climate Adaptation Committee. It's a regional committee. It's a county-wide committee where my fellow commissioners appointed me to that. And what we do is, we're looking at how can we better work together, especially with the townships, with the severe weather, health and just changes in climate that can be affecting our local governments, you know, our county government and certainly our state government. One example, last year, we decided to do a study on the Ordo because our water levels were so low, we were worried about what's going to happen to the pilings in which the Ordo sits on. This year, our lake level is up, I believe it's almost 18 inches. So now, even though our concern might be, you know, shifted a little, you know, these are things that hit government fast. And as you know, we plan for infrastructure years out. And with the deep freeze this winter, it's one more example of what do we do when we're hit with situations that tax us financially, but certainly make it hard as a community to go forward with the plans we have. So we will be presenting to the Township Association this month. We are presenting at the MML. But we hope that what this will do is encourage other communities, other local governments to start working together as all of us go through these changes. So it's been a great community to work under, and there will be a presentation coming soon even to this commission. The Marquette Firefighters, Local 643, I'd like to thank them for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Boot, fill the boot fundraiser they did. I was a part of that, Commissioner Reynolds and Mayor Nimi. And I just got a thank you note saying that this year they raised $13,137 from our community, which is the most they have ever raised. So I'd like to thank everyone for chipping in. And just to note, all money that was donated does stay locally for the MDA chapter. There's a new sign outside of City Hall. When I drove in, I thought, wow, it looks great. Certainly gives a significant face to City Hall. And I'd just like to thank the previous commission, it was before my time, but they did approve new signs for the city, and I do think that they, they put on a great face for us. I did have friends from Minnesota visiting last weekend, and they, every time they come, they're amazed at how clean our city is. And so thanks to everyone for their help, Public Works, but particularly everyone in the community that takes care of their, their yards and neighborhoods. People do notice, and people do applaud us for that. And the only other thing I have, when the city manager has time, I believe our budget meetings will be televised if people can't show up, but maybe if he could comment on that during his comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kambezi. Commissioner Kampana?
The new sign is very nice. I think it's there today for the first time, but it's worth looking at. This past weekend, they had the Orde Shore. Unfortunately, there was a death involved there. That's a sad note. But by all other accounts, it's a highly successful race. If you're downtown Friday or Saturday, place is crawling with people. There's just a lot of people in town for that. So, you know, a thank you to the people who organize it and participate in it and run it and volunteer for it. It just brings people to town. I'm sure half of them would probably like to stay here, live here, work here. And maybe with a Smart Zone, they will be able to someday. But it's a very good promotion. It's good, you know, it's good for Marquette. City Marquette is good for the county of Marquette. So it's all a good thing. And lastly, Frank Shado, I knew him through the store on the east side that I had. Just the nicest down-to-earth man of integrity you'd want to know. I mean, just, he could talk to anybody, and he usually did, and just a good person. We're going to miss him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kampana. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Just a couple of, of quick things as I, if I can. You know, it's been mentioned that budget starts next week, and I not only encourage our candidates to be here for it, but also the citizens too, because really, the budget drives a lot of policy decisions. So while you may think, well, the budget, that's really just arguing over to buy a second dump truck or not, or how much we should charge for ice time at Lakeview, really, those decisions also reflect policy decisions that are made as the outcome of the money. And it's been said that if you want to know what's happening, follow the money. And the budget session is the one where the money is. So again, I encourage our folks to come on in and learn that process, because of the six, three of you will end up sitting here, and it would be a great advantage to you to understand how the budget that you will be living under was put together and, and decided on. Concerning Mayor Shado, I knew Frank fairly well, and he was certainly a real asset to the City of Marquette. He will be a great loss. That was, that was very sad. I do agree with Commissioner Reynolds, that I think the city does need to look at it at a citywide truck ordinance in terms of food trucks and how they can operate and where they can operate. It certainly is something that I think Mana's corrected, is beyond the boundaries of simply the DDA, but does really reflect the entire city. So we need to wrestle with that and figure out how to do it. to wrestle with that and figure out how to do it. Uh, lastly, uh, the Iron Ore Heritage Trail folks have put their, their kiosk in downtown. It's right behind the Commons Building. And that really is a trailhead for the Iron Ore Heritage Trail as it goes further west. It really is a very, a good, uh, information center for not only the history of the city of Marquette, but surrounding communities too. I think they're missing one panel yet to be put up, and I don't think they've officially hit it with the champagne bottle to bless it. But it certainly is standing upright. I encourage folks to go on out, take a good look at it, because, uh, it will only get better. And this one more steps from one more group that's helping to make Marquette, uh, the best community it can be. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Stonehouse. Uh, I just have one small item. Uh, over the week, uh, well, the weekend, I guess it was weekend, yeah, over the weekend, we had the Community Band Festival here. Uh, the Marquette City Band played, the Ngani City Band played, and the, uh, Festival Concert Band played, uh, which was amalgamation of both bands and people from all over the place. Uh, Manastique, Minnesota, Indiana, Illinois, they all came here. Uh, they were musicians, and, and it was just amazing to, over a matter of a couple of days and some workshops and a few practices, they gelled into a band that, uh, at least I didn't notice any missteps. And I know the, the conductor, Mr. Gugan, uh, commented on, on how easy it was to, to direct the band, and how, how amazing it was that they came together in such short notice. And, and certainly, it wasn't quite as many people as the Ordo Shore brings in, but it brought people into this community. And, and it's, uh, just a, uh, a great, it was a great concert by both our, our Marquette City Band and Ngani City Band, which actually has members in common, because some people really like to play, I guess. And, uh, but it was a nice community event, and hopefully they'll do it next year, and hopefully it'll become an annual event. And it can only mean good things for our city. That's all I have. Uh, city manager? Oh, excuse me. Maybe you might, uh, tell us what times and dates the budget sessions are. I meant to do that, forgot.
Uh, yes, sir. Let me, um, first start, uh, thank you again. I don't want to be too verbose, because I kind of like the idea of finishing before eight o'clock this evening, too. Uh, as far as the food truck ordinance goes, I just caution everybody, uh, to recall, there's always more than one side to the story. This isn't something we're ignoring. Uh, part of the reason why we're waiting for the, the DDA to provide us with some insight is to, is to make sure that we understand where the nexus of all the challenges are that are being reported. Uh, the only place actually that the food trucks consistently come back and say they have problems is when they try to park in front of a restaurant in the DDA, which, which creates tension with the Northside Restaurant Association. And so, we've been waiting for the DDA to give us a statement of their view as to how they would like to manage that process, because in most other parts of the city, there aren't problems. It's simply a food truck looking to park in a private parking lot and ply their roads. And every time a food truck is asked for some kind of support from the city, whether it's to support participation in the Ordo Shore, or the US Guns Frisbee Tournament, or any one of the other activities, we give them the permits. We've actually upgraded the infrastructure in the park's electrical, water, and sewer, so that they can ply their trade more effectively. So, it, there's a disconnect, but I would caution the commission to remember, there's two sides to the story. And, uh, we're certainly going to look into it. But, um, I don't think it's as simple as what's been discussed at the, at the bench this evening. Uh, the city commission meetings will all be televised. Uh, the first one is tomorrow, uh, Tuesday, the 12th of August at 5:15. Uh, the second will be Wednesday, the 13th, 5:15. The third will be Friday, uh, at 8:30 in the morning, the 15th. And then, a week from Wednesday is hopefully the last one scheduled. It'll be at 8:30 on the 20th. Uh, we usually have, depending on the mood of the commission, one more session informally, just to wrap up things that are captured along the way. It's not as much of a marathon session as the other ones, but really kind of a wrap-up to make sure that we got it right before the final submission of the budget. Uh, but those will all be live broadcast. They'll also be recorded, and so we'll rerun those. So, if people don't have an opportunity to be in, here in person, see it live on TV, they'll get a chance to watch it again. And then hopefully, if they do it from some of the early ones, they'll get a chance to come down and maybe participate at some of the later ones. Uh, community office hours is the only other thing I'd like to add, Your Honor. We have it still Wednesday this week at 10 o'clock in Peter White Public Library on the main floor conference room. And it's another way, uh, to help us understand the good things that you'd like to have done in the community, as well as maybe seek clarifications for other things you're hearing about. And so, we always have a, a good turnout. We're looking forward to seeing as many people like to come down and help us make Marquette a better place.
Thank you, city manager. Um, also, the, the proposed budget is on the city website, or will be on the city website shortly, on, under finance and accounting. So, uh, nothing further. We're adjourned.